All right. I think we're ready to get going.
Do you have the organizational meeting? I don't see that here, Michaela.
Maybe not.
Yes.
Yeah. It looks like this. Yeah, that's it. But you're missing the agenda. Here's your agenda.
There we go. Gotcha. Okay, I'm good now.
Everybody?
Yep.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. We are gonna get this started off. We need to appoint a chair and a vice chair. So if someone would like to make the motion.
I would move that Darren Heater be chair.
Is there a second? Can we have a discussion first?
Sure.
Okay. A couple of things happened last year, and I just wanna make sure that they don't happen going forward because we can become contentious. I wanna make sure that you're going to stay a part of these meetings going forward and represent those constituents that we're supposed to represent.
Yeah, I've had no issues with that.
Okay. Also, I wanna make sure that you're making your decisions and not leaning on others and having them make those decisions for you.
Which ones?
Well...
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, I feel...
Okay.
I feel like I make my own decisions and...
Well, I know...
I think it would be... I mean, I give input.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm not indicating that I don't go talk to people and get input. I mean, I've been doing this a couple of years. And I feel like I've got a big learning curve. And so I reach out to people and get their opinions. But in no way, I mean, there's not one person in the county that I haven't disagreed with, you know, and went, you know, and had good debates with. And I think that's healthy.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I can assure you that I'll be making my own decisions. So I appreciate that.
Okay. All right.
I have full confidence that both of you are strong colleagues here. So, and you've obviously both had experience on the board, which I think is important for whoever is gonna be the chair this next year. I think that's a strength. And I think from that, I think that it just makes sense that we have a very strong collegial type of collaboration up here.
Yeah.
And we do have to have a leader. And I think that, in my opinion, Darren would be, in my opinion, the strongest person right now to lead this board.
Okay. Also, there was a decision that you wanted to make concerning the recycle. And I just wanna make sure that you're not gonna make decisions without conferring with the board first in going forward in matters concerning Warren County.
Well, I mean, we have to vote. I mean, the procedure... The pers... Crystal, I think I've actually really extended, you know, what I think and trying to... I think one of my strongest points was I've always tried to build consensus within the board. You know, I've wanted you... Anytime you and I differed, I wanted to try to influence you to my side. And that was important... That's important to me, and it's gonna continue to be important to me. The county can get stronger if we can all agree. And I don't know that we had the right formats in place for us to have detailed discussions. So I can assure you that...
Okay.
I'm not interested in running the county by myself.
Okay. I appreciate that. Like, last year when we were at the end of the ARPA discussions, and I know you had expressed that you had a different opinion on how we wanted to use the funds. And I really wish that you had pushed to explain yourself more at that situation.
I just requested a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did request a meeting. And Dawn was copied, Erin was copied, you were copied. And I said, "We're spending an awful lot of money, and I'd really like to talk about this additionally." And four days later, the resolution was on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, and you passed it. So I don't know what more I can do to push, to talk more. But I can assure you that...
During those work sessions, like, we had been talking for months, and I wanna say almost a year, about what we were gonna do. And Erin, as chair, had said, "This is what I want for this money. At least 2.5 of it, I would like to go for return on investment." And then at the last two meetings, you start saying that you have some hesitation. And we were in work sessions where you can talk and you can explain yourself. And you didn't. And then you didn't come to any meetings after that, except for the board meetings. And that left a really bad taste in my mouth for your leadership. So going forward, I would hope that we can really talk these things out and make sure that we're on the same page, or at least we understand each other going forward.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. And roll call then?
All right. McIntyre?
No.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
All right. Now we need a vice chair.
I'll make a motion to make Mark Snell the vice chair.
I'll second that.
McIntyre?
No.
Heater?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. The third item on the agenda is to authorize the chair to sign certain... Oh, yes. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is to set the meeting times for the 2023 calendar year. I'm gonna make a motion to have our meetings on the first and third Tuesday at 9:30 a.m., both meetings in the morning.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
McIntyre?
No.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
The third item is to authorize the chair to sign certain documents on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
And then the fourth item on the agenda is to authorize the auditor to pay certain claims. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
The fifth item on the agenda is to authorize pay for sheriff's transport assist personnel. And I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do we still need that? How does that go?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe?
Yeah. If you'd like major fees, things that they come up periodically through year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you did second it.
Okay. Sure.
We have a motion, and we have a second. So roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
The sixth item on the agenda is to authorize payment of maintenance of veterans' graves.
Okay. How much are we gonna do that for?
I'll make a motion to authorize payment of maintenance of veterans' graves.
I'll second that motion.
But how much is that going to be? Because I know we had... Okay. Thank you.
So Snell made a motion, and I seconded that motion. So we need a roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
Okay. The seventh item is to name the depositories.
I did have a question on this. Probably a... And it was really on the... I'm sure this is a standard practice here, so it's just more informational. I noticed that there were various amounts. Maybe I'm talking about the treasure wrong. Because I think that relates to the treasures report later, doesn't it? And the second, I mean, that we're gonna have...
This is...
Yeah.
The depositories right here.
Yeah. I had a question on that as to what the... What was the rationale for the different amounts per institution? I'm sure that there's a logical explanation for that.
I do not know. Do you want to...
Basically, it's just what the institutions I use the most. Like, People's Bank is where we keep our tax money. So that's gonna be higher than where I keep my driver's license money. Just varies. And where the majority of our CDs go and where the I-Pay is pretty high out in front of me. That's where we park our ARPA money and our Justice Center bond and that kind of stuff. So that's gonna be higher, too.
The other amounts, I think 2 million is the kind of a common number for several of the institutions.
Yeah.
I was curious why it was set at that level. Is that something that's just currently set, or could it be more?
More than likely. At one time, I might have had a million-dollar CD in there. And to cover the interest, I set it at 2 million. They're probably not a place that typically gets our CD bids. But at one point, and just to be safe, I leave them on the list just in case because I put CD bids up to every, all the financial institutions in the county. So I never know who's gonna get it. So it's just kind of a...
So 2 million is just kind of arbitrary number that's just there because you've done it that way in the past? Or is that...
Yeah. I mean, because...
I guess I'm asking the question because, you know, as we go forward, is that enough? Because I don't know how you ask the financial institutions to participate in our relations with financial matters here. So I'm just kinda curious why it was set at 2 million for several of those institutions. Then we had several that were much higher.
Yeah.
I just wondered if that was high enough for those institutions? Or they were, for some reason, put at that level because of some other reason why they were there?
Yeah. We probably... We don't have another relationship with them outside of maybe a CD every now and then. So... And the other thing is if I see that we're gonna go over that, we can raise that anytime during the year.
That's all I have. Strictly informational. Thank you.
That's a good question. Okay. So I'll make a motion to name the depositories as listed in our packet.
Second.
Roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
Eighth item on the agenda is the investment report. Do you wanna go over this, Julie?
Yeah. I mean, it's just an overall look at all of our accounts at the end of November 30th. We haven't balanced December yet. So you're always gonna see a report at this meeting from November. And it's just kind of a recap of all the balances and the CDs and everything that we have.
Excellent.
Are there any particular trends that you've seen or things that have changed maybe this past year or what we are presently compared to prior years?
Interest rate.
Would you...
You're gonna like my budget meeting.
Yeah. Good.
Revenue's going up.
Yikes.
It's good news.
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to accept the investment report.
Second. Roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
Okay. Item number nine, designate official newspapers.
I believe we received three in the pack there. Can we just do them all in one motion?
Yep.
I would move the three that had been received, which would be the Record Herald, Carlisle Sinison, and the North Warren Town and Country News. Be our designated official newspapers to the county.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
If you have a question, though, I don't know. It's in the past. It is more just informationally. And this might be something that one of our newspaper people can address, too. And that is relating to the online publications. I know that Iowa Code requires print news. But I stop and think about how many of us are really relying upon print for our news and start to question a little bit if there is any movement towards using online news sources as designated. And maybe those in the news field can answer that question. I know that the Iowa legislature's involved here, so there's things way beyond us.
Amy Duncan from the Record Herald. And about 87% of Iowans said they have read public notices in their newspaper in the last year. So they're still very red. But Iowa's newspapers, at their own expense, put all of our public notices that we receive from all public bodies online. And they're searchable. You can go in and search by Warren County. I can send you the website. But if you just Google Iowa Public Notices, comes up with the website. You can go in and say Warren County, or Indianola, or a specific newspaper. And I do that a lot for people who are looking for approbate, for instance. So it's very usable. But yes, newspapers are aware that people wanna look online, and you can link to that service from my website and most newspapers in the state. But otherwise, any change is up to the legislature.
And your newspaper is maybe a little different than the other two that we have. So that's really a good thing to know.
Yeah.
That your newspaper provides that service because I just think so many people are not looking for the online service. So I think that's a good thing.
Yep.
I guess I wanna go one step further. Are we being broad with our publication by limiting to the three newspapers? And this is strictly your opinion, of course.
Well, I think you're doing everything you can here. I mean, because... Because the independent advocate also links to them. So there... You're getting the only digital website in the county, and you're getting the three main newspapers. So I think that's really all you can do at this point. I think you'll see over the years more online options come available, but...
Well, I just wanna make sure that we're being broad enough with our communication.
Yeah.
And you're an expert in these types of things because you're in the business.
I try to be.
Also, I think you probably have a public interest at heart here. And so that's why I made the question. Are we doing what we need to do as a Board of Supervisors to adequately be transparent and share the goings-on of the public business here?
Yeah. Yeah. It's tough because you can put it out there, and not everybody will read it. So, which is the hard part. So that part I have no great answer for, except we do publicize that we have them, and we try and let people know that it's there. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this is beyond just publication. And Amy, I don't think this applies to you. But getting our agendas and our... Our meeting notes easily more accessible on our website, I think, will also be helpful for the public as well. And I don't know, like, one day... I've had people say, "Where was your agenda? Where's your packet information?" And so how... Yeah. I mean, we absolutely gotta take the next step forward on our website and get that stuff. So people just go to our website, and it's easy to get. And maybe we'll task Michaela with that. But let's put that on our list of what we need to do.
Right.
Great. And at the same time, I'd like to just do a quick shout-out and thank you to Amy Duncan and her publications because that's where, frankly, as a citizen, I've been able to get the information for these meetings and have them. So I do wanna publicly thank you for the work that she's done to share the agendas because that's where I've ended up being able to access them, not always from boards.
Okay. So we did make a motion on designating the official newspaper. We had a second, and we voted, and we all passed that. So we're good on that subject. The next item on the agenda is to set the mileage reimbursement rate for 2023. And I'm trying to...
So what is... The present rate is 52 cents.
Is that what the IRS rate is?
I think so. It might even be higher, the IRS one.
I'm wondering if it should go higher. You're probably being lying with the IRS rate, whatever that is. Julie, do you know?
I don't know, but I tend to agree with you. I think it probably...
We should really tie it to the IRS rate, whatever that is.
Well, I'll look it up.
Tracy, do you know what that IRS rate is?
It's something that's 57, but I'm not sure if it's...
We should be able to find that pretty quickly.
Can somebody look it up on the website?
Tracy's looking it up on her phone.
65.5 is what people say.
65.5?
Oh.
5.5 cents per mile for business use.
I don't know if I wanna go up that high.
6.5?
Yeah.
That's our IRS document.
That's what the IRS is now?
That doesn't surprise me because 10 years ago, when I was getting mileage, it was 55, 57, and gas per...
We've had increased costs of fuel.
Right.
So that's a big factor determining reimbursement rate for mileage. Much depends on me to do this and then make a motion. You can choose to not second it if you don't want to.
Uh-huh.
I would make a motion that we reimburse at the IRS rate. And what do you say it is, Joe?
According to IRS document, it's 65.5 cents per mile for business use.
I'll do it. 65.5 cents per mile.
One question I have, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, but how many miles do we reimburse on an annual basis? And how much of a cost increase is that?
I don't know.
I mean, if we're reimbursing, you know, 100,000, we just spent $1,300, which is fine. But if we're doing... If we're reimbursing 2 million, that's a whole different story. But I don't know what it is. And we don't... Yeah.
Yeah. We have a lot of county cars. I know myself, I do reimbursement. I'm trying to think any other department that would. Who else within the county?
Yeah. We don't have that many. We don't have that many.
I know back when... Yeah. When the attorneys... Oh, zoning. Okay. You guys would. Okay. I just don't foresee it being a million or even 500,000.
I don't either.
Here's my feeling on this. If people are using their personal vehicle on behalf of the county for county business, I think we have an obligation to fairly reimburse them for the use of their vehicle. I mean, we always have the option to buy and to lease county vehicles that we make available. But I think in the long run, you might find that's a much more costly adventure than to do the reimbursement. So I think from just a basic philosophical standpoint, I think out of fairness, we should really reimburse people for their personal vehicles that they're providing on behalf of the county. And they should have their responsibility of added contribution. So that's why I say I don't like raising the amount. But I think we do have to face the fact that costs have gone up. And when people are using their personal vehicles on behalf of the county, we probably should err on the side of adequately reimbursing them for the use of that vehicle.
Crystal, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I feel since I do a lot of reimbursement on my mileage, I don't even feel like I want to vote on this at this point. I'd be willing to raise it maybe 5 cents. But I just don't feel comfortable raising it. What is that, 12, 13 cents? It's just my feelings on it.
That's for your own... Because you don't wanna personally benefit from a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you can recuse yourself if you'd like to do that. And I'm just... I'm gonna second Mark's motion to move our mileage rate from 52 cents to 65 and 1/2 cents per mile. And so we have a motion, and we have a second. And roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Epstein?
Snell?
Aye.
Heater?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to set the employee holiday schedule for 2023. And for Mark's benefit, we've looked at this in a work session, and we've pretty much generally approved these, and we discussed these. But if you see anything that you're opposed to, we're certainly open for any kind of discussion around holidays.
Let me pull it up just a second. I'm just trying to find my page that had all the holidays listed on it. Do you have one?
I don't know, Michaela, if it got in the packet.
I was at the work session where this was discussed. Let me see if I can find it.
There were...
Do you have the list?
I have it on.
I got it right here. So did we end up... Let's see here. I think the only question we really had was what day of the year of the week that New Year's fell. And I think we determined that we felt on Sunday, we wanted to make sure it was Monday was the closed day.
Yeah.
So are we following the judicial district's schedule or are we following the Iowa State holiday's schedule?
Well, Nate, do you wanna come up and...
Kind of a combination of both. And I think we took out President's Day.
So...
It's my understanding.
I kinda made my notes on here. We had taken off President's Day. And then we kind of talked about approving New Year's for next year just so we don't have to have some special meeting. So these are the ones that we had talked about previously.
Okay. So we're looking at Martin Luther King Day, Cousins' Day, no. Memorial Day, yes. Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and the day after Thanksgiving. Christmas Eve or Christmas Day.
So Christmas Eve this year will fall on Sunday. So...
So we take the Monday off.
So you could do... Christmas is on Monday. So you could either do Friday, Monday off, or Monday, Tuesday off.
My suggestion was to follow on Monday. That... Well, Monday would be a holiday, of course. See, Christmas is gonna fall on Sunday. Friday, December 23rd.
Christmas is on Monday.
Christmas is on Monday. So typically, you wouldn't even have to do an extra day because you have normal business on Friday and normal business on Tuesday, the day after. Christmas on Monday. So... And then the New Year's. What did we...
It's on a Monday.
It's on a Monday.
So that would fall on the 2024. So we would have to have two days for Christmas to give us our full tent.
Oh, isn't this beautiful?
Have you had a chance to look at this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So what are your... What's your recommendation for the holiday schedule, then? So we gotta decide if we're gonna go the Friday before the Christmas weekend or the Tuesday after. I don't know.
That would be an additional day because your Monday, being a regular, what would be normal business day, you don't need to do an extra day you don't need to do an extra day because Friday would be regular business day and the Tuesday would be the regular business day, the day after Christmas.
Right. So, we...
The only year we would take off would be Monday, December twenty-fifth, after the close for Christmas, of course. So, the question, I think it's been raised, is are we going to give a second day of Christmas time?
Because typically, we do two days for Christmas. We do...
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that.
Yeah, so this year, we got Friday, Monday off.
Oh, okay. Now, I understand why it's an issue.
Yep.
So, then that, you're really saying that I was going to do Friday or Tuesday?
Correct. Yep.
Have we ever done, well, this is just a question for the, you know, suggesting to me.
So, if we...
Do you think on this, I mean, how are we...
Friday and then Monday and then the New Year's. Go ahead and say the first.
So, you're suggesting we should take the Friday and the Monday at Christmas?
Mm-hmm. Friday, Monday, and...
I think that's traditionally how I work. Okay, so Friday would be the twenty-third or the twenty-second. And then Tuesday, December twenty-sixth would be added to this one.
It would just be Friday, the twenty-second.
Oh, just then Monday, yeah, because Tuesday, we'd have business.
As usual.
As usual.
Okay.
The day after Christmas.
Okay. Crystal, you good with this?
Yep.
Okay.
Looking at through the New Year's for twenty-four to just not have to do a special...
Right, so then that would be just the January first on twenty-four.
Correct, it'd be on Monday.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, just to clarify, make sure, you know, so it would be Friday before Christmas and Christmas Day, that would be...
And what's the date for the New Year's holiday then?
So, it'd be Monday, January first.
Okay. Two thousand twenty-four. So, I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule as discussed and add Monday, January first, two thousand twenty-four to this resolution as well.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we're at the Boards and Commissions Supervisor Appointment section. This is a time where we get to pick and choose which commissions we sit on. I'm just going to have Michaela read down through these. And if you have one that you're on and want to stay on, let us know. If you'd like to be on one, please let us know. And do you have this list in front of you, Michaela?
Yeah, I just... I think you all have the list as well on what the current appointments are.
Yes.
Well, I can get it started. We might need to know who's on, if you have that in front of you. The first item is the Aging Resources of Central Iowa Board of Directors. Not sure.
I'm on that and you were on it and asked me to take it back. I have too many and I would like to divvy out some, so if either you would have it back or Mark, that would be great.
I could take that back.
Thank you.
So, on Aging Resources, you can put Darren on that one, Michaela. The CICS Governance Board.
I think that was Aaron's.
Okay. I've served on that the first year. Does that appeal to anybody?
CICS.
It's like mental health.
I see it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just kind of double checking some things here.
It's the Mental Health Board.
So, just to clarify here, what's all included under Central Iowa Community Services?
It's a board of like nine counties.
I will do that one.
Eleven counties. It's a pretty good board from the standpoint, they're cutting edge on mental illness and it's a good group of people. You'll meet with, I think it's actually eleven other supervisors. They Zoom their meetings, so that's kind of nice.
I'd be willing to do that one.
Okay. Central Iowa Tourism Region, I can take that one on. If that's okay, Crystal?
Oh, fine.
Okay. Child Welfare, DCAT Executive Committee, I'm on that currently. I can continue on that. CIRTPA, Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance.
I would like to do that one.
Central Iowa Water Trails Governance Committee.
Well, underneath the Transportation Planning Alliance is also different committees underneath there. I think I've been serving on the Transportation Technical Committee, so...
So, are you wanting to continue there?
I'd like to. And then there's the Policy Committee and the Enhancement Committee.
Now, okay, so let's see. So, those are subcommittees then, aren't they?
Yep.
Okay.
I think, um, yeah, Brian, as board members, we don't serve on the Policy Committee, correct?
I don't believe you do.
Okay, all right, so we could take that one off, but the Enhancement Committee, we do.
So, the CIRTPA, that was the one I was interested in. Doesn't that also include then those subcommittees as part of that responsibility?
Not always. Like, the Technical Committee, we have David Carroll as the primary and then you would need a board of supervisor to go with him. Aaron was before. I've served on it before and I'd like to continue on that. And then there's the Enhancement Committee, which the Conservation Director, and then you would need a board member to serve with them.
Do you want to be, do you want to add the Transportation Enhancement Committee to your law?
Yes, I would like to. So, okay, let's just go back through this again then. So, under the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance, I would like to serve on that.
Okay.
And then the, so the Policy Committee and the Transportation Technical Committee. Transportation Enhancement. So, do we have just one board member on each one of those or...
No, the Policy Committee is only our engineer has it, is invited to serve on that one. But it's the Technical and the Enhancement where budget is concerned, and so we're asked to serve on those. So, the Technical, I'd like to serve on, and then the Enhancement is the other one you said you would. So, if you look at our packet, it would be B and C. You would have E. And then under E, I would get B and you would get C.
Now, Aaron DeCook served on the Technical Committee before, didn't he? Well, I would really like to do that. So, didn't Aaron serve on all three of these before?
A board member doesn't serve on the Policy Committee, but he served on the Planning Alliance, the Technical and the Enhancement. In the year before, I served on the Technical with David. On the Enhancement Committee, you have a member of the Conservation, which is Mark. And then the alternate would be the board member.
Okay, so you're saying you would like to be on...
Just the Technical.
Just the Technical.
Mm-hmm.
As the alternate? Is that what you're saying?
Yep. I usually go up there and just listen.
Because, uh... Because the reason I'm, I would like to serve as where it relates to the MPO type stuff and the transportation things up there, particularly because of the impacts of the rural Des Moines area on the northern part of the county. And since that's where I'm from, I think I feel as though the folks up there in that part of the county want to make sure they have a strong presence from that area, too.
Well, you are certainly welcome to serve on that.
That's the only reason why I'm, but I'm also letting you know that as we get down here to some of these, the MPO Committee, I'd like to serve there as well because for that very same reason.
Yeah, I think that's great. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would, I would like to serve on that Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance and the Subcommittee areas there that relate to that for that reason.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mark's going to handle item E, Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance, with the three, well, two subcommittees that require a board of supervisor. And then he also wants to serve on the Des Moines Area Transportation Planning Committee, the MPO.
Right.
Okay. On the, the next item is the Central Iowa Water Trails Governance Committee. Any takers? I'll take it. The next item is the Edward Owens Estate Trust Board. Not sure what that is.
Oh, I serve on that. It is an educational scholarship.
Do you want to stay on that one, Crystal?
Sure.
Next item is the Fifth Judicial District Departmental of Correctional Services Board of Directors.
Okay, I serve on that currently and I'll continue.
Okay. You okay with that, Mark? Okay. The Heart Iowa Regional Transit Agency Policy Board, HRTA Board.
I'd like to serve on that.
Crystal?
No, thank you.
Okay. Iowa Workforce Development, Region Eleven Board. That's mine. I can stay on that.
Does that really meet very often?
Not overwhelmingly, six or eight times a year. And I've just been recently meeting with some, with a new employee. They have a new director and he's new, so we've been collaborating and I think we have some pretty good things going. And so, and there will be some things I'll be bringing to the board relative to workforce development.
Okay.
Iowa Heartland Resource Conservation Development.
I would be willing to serve on that one.
Crystal, you okay with that?
Yes.
Anything you're willing to serve on, I'm willing to. The Impact Community Action Partnership Executive Board and the Impact Community Action Partnership Advisory Board. Are you on that now, Crystal, both of those?
I'm on both of those.
Are those pretty heavy meeting?
Yeah, they meet very regularly and it's a pretty long meeting. The director is very involved and very hands-on and explains well. And Warren County is one of their largest contributors as far as the programs that we want for our homeless and others. I'd be willing to let anyone else become involved in that, especially the advisory board because that's something that happens right here in Warren County.
Now, it says here, it has you listed as an alternate. Is that accurate?
Well, Darren had it and then, yeah, because of scheduling, I had to take it back, so I am...
So, you did really end up taking it down full-time, so it's more than just an alternate type role?
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. So, if you would like it, I would happily impart it to you.
Is that one you're willing to continue with?
I could if I need to. I don't have any problem.
I would be, if you would rather not, I don't have a strong interest one way or the other. I just want to do my part here to make sure. So, if we need to spread out the load, so to speak, in terms of representation, if this is one you would choose not to have as part of your group of responsibility areas, I'd be willing to take that on, but I'm not, I'm not asking for it necessarily.
Okay, all right.
So, you, it's kind of, from my perspective, it'd be your decision whether or not you want to continue there or if you want to, you know, pull back some of your time and go to something else, I'd be willing to take that on.
That'd be great. Thank you. I'd love for you to...
To help out.
Learn more about the impact and how they contribute to five counties here in Iowa. And they are the largest community action program within Iowa, so you'll learn a lot. Yep.
So, are you saying you would like to shed that responsibility?
Sure. Thanks, Mark.
And I assume that would be for both of those then?
Yes.
Okay.
Kayakota Board of Directors. I'd like to get, I'd like to jump on that one.
I thought you were. Okay.
They don't meet, so, but I think they're going to have a big project coming up and I'd like to, like, be involved in that. Mid-Iowa Development Fund Board, I'm also...
Okay. I'm on this one currently. They loan or grant money to businesses that apply. It was kind of dwindling and then COVID hit and they've become a much-needed asset again, so...
You want to stay on that then, Crystal?
Sure, I don't mind.
So, which one is that?
The Mid-Iowa Development Fund Board.
Okay, thank you.
Warren County Economic Development Board.
I'd like to serve on that if that's, if no one else is willing to. Okay.
You okay with that, Crystal?
Yeah, that's great.
Warren County E-911 Joint Services Board.
I'd like to remain on that board, please.
I'd like to try to get on that board as well.
Okay.
You want to be an alternate?
No. I'd like to get on the board.
Well, seeing as you're trying to dissolve the board, I don't think that's a good idea.
I'm not trying to dissolve the board. I'm just trying to come up with a new structure within the organization, one that's more agreeable, compatible with, and that aligns with the board of supervisors. I'm certainly not trying to hurt the board or hurt 911 at all. That's not my point.
You're going to do away with a lot of the technical knowledge that that board has if you want to redo the board.
No, I'm not advocating that. I just would like to be the member that sits on that board.
Well, I'm not willing to give that one up.
I'd like to see Darren serve on that board. I think that'd be a good one to represent us.
And I think you guys met and decided all these beforehand, too. That's wonderful.
That's...
Well, you're going to have a fight on your hands, a big fight, because I'm coming to every meeting and I'm still going to listen.
That'll be fine.
I'd like to serve on... I'd like to serve on the Emergency Management Commission.
Gladly.
I, yeah, I second that as well. Um, Warren County GIS Commission? I'm happy to sit on that as well. And then the last one is the Wastewater Reclamation Authority.
I'd like to serve on that one.
Okay. So, do we need to make a resolution on these as we discuss them?
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read down through them, I'm gonna make a re- resolution, um, on the Aging Resources of Central Iowa Board, that Darren's on that. Central Iowa Community Services, CICS Governance Board, that Mark is on that. Central Iowa Tourism, Tourism Region, Darren is on that. Child Welfare, DCAT Executive Committee, Darren. Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance, Mark. Transportation Technical Committee, Mark. Transportation Enhancement Committee, Mark. Central Iowa Water Trails Governance, Darren. Des Moines Area Transportation Planning Committee, Mark. Edward Owens Estate Trust Board, Crystal. Fifth Judicial District Department of Correctional Services Board of Directors, I've got Crystal. Heart of Iowa Regional Transit Agency Policy Board, HRTA, Mark. Iowa Workforce Development, Darren. Iowa Heartland Resource Conservation and Development, Mark. Impact, both Community Action Partnership Executive and Advisory Boards, Mark. Kayakota, Darren. Mid-Iowa Development Fund Board, Crystal. Warren County Economic Development Board, Mark. Warren County E-911 Joint Services Board, Darren. Warren County Emergency Management Commission, Mark. Warren County GIS Commission, Darren. And Wastewater Reclamation Authority, Mark. That is my motion.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Thank you, motion passes. Next item is to consider the appointments to the following boards or commissions. Warren County Board of Adjustment, first up. So we, we've been working on this as well, Mark. Um, the applications are in your packet.
I read it.
Do you have any reservations on any of the applications for any of these boards?
I do not.
Okay. Crystal, do you have any reservations?
Nope.
Okay, I make a motion to, uh, approve the appointments as listed in the packet to, um, the boards listed on our agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Uh, we have several.
Okay, maybe we should read through those again. So the, um...
So is there a particular Commissioner Board? We have eight of them here, Lindsay.
There was Roger Cool. Zoning Commission, Laura Oliver, but, well, actually, we're gonna need to go back through these, I think, we're gonna have to pull back.
Individually?
Yeah.
We can do that.
We're gonna have to do these individually.
Okay.
Because in, in some of the cases, they were either-or.
Okay.
So I can see why she's asking the question.
So let's go to the Warren County Board of Adjustments. I got Roger, uh, Cool, Kuel.
And then we do have Laura Oliver listed as either Zoning Commission or Board of Adjustment.
So should we approve Roger to the, okay, so we got Roger?
And I guess the other question is, how many openings are there on the, that we have to appoint here today? So if, if we have Roger and reappoint him, that would be in a, yeah, okay, I would, I would move that we reappoint Roger Kuel to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Yep. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Okay, then, I assume we need to go down here to the Condemnation Compensation Commission. How many openings are on that board?
Thirteen.
How many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Lee, I got Lee Adams as, I got an application from Lee Adams for this. And Brady Jackson.
Well, you've actually got more than that.
And, okay.
So the, the ones that we have in the packet, um, include Joe Gavin, who has asked to be on this, um, to be considered. Don Van Reiswick has been asked to be considered. Misty Soldwich, is that right? Yeah. Misty Soldwich has, uh, offered to be on this. Brady Jackson has offered up the name to be considered, and Lee Adams. How many positions do we have to fill?
There should be two more.
How many?
I said there should be two more in the applications.
Who are the other two? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Donald Van Reiswick?
Yeah. Yeah, I had them, I listed those just a moment ago, I read their names.
Brandy Warner's not up on the, we're working on the Condemnation Compensation Commission.
That, that's what the Civil Service Commission is.
Okay.
So the names I have in the packet here to consider are Lee Adams, Brady...
And, and Joe Gavin, I think you wanted to, too.
Don and Joe. Is there another one beyond that?
There's one more, there's Joe Gavin, who's at the end of your packet.
Yeah, Joe Gavin, yeah. So I, I think I got one. I'll entertain a motion. Two, three, four, I have five to appoint.
Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna do? I would make a motion that we appoint Lee Adams, Brady Jackson, Misty Soldwich, Donald Van Reiswick, and Joe Gavin to the Condemnation Compensation Commission.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. The next commission or board is the Conservation Board.
I make a motion to accept Angie Crowe on the Conservation Board.
Second.
Roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Next item is the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance.
Uh, I think we still have a Zoning Commission and Board of Health to finish up.
Yep. So I got Item D that we haven't established yet, Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance. Do we have any applicants for that? No?
Where's Port Al?
I think that one may have to be tabled.
Okay. I don't see any applicants in there for that, right?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
So is this for the, the public member versus the board appointment?
Yes.
Do, are we looking for members for that commission?
Mm-hmm.
Let's continue to look.
Okay.
The Des Moines Area MPO Transportation Technical Committee, do we have any applications for that?
No.
No, okay. Health and Environment?
We had one here in the packet, uh, was Sandy Deering.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I would move that we put, uh, appoint Sandy Deering to the Health and Environment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. And the Zoning Commission is our last item.
How many positions do we have to fill on this? Two openings?
Yeah, we only have one.
We only have two, uh, people here to consider.
I only have one. Who's the other one?
Laura Oliver was, she was one or the other.
Right, right, right.
And we put her already on the Board of Adjustments. So I don't think she...
Oh.
She does not want to do both?
I don't think you can.
Yeah, she can't, they can't do both.
Well, no, I...
Douglas?
I don't think we did a, put her on the Board of Adjustment. We didn't do that, did we, or did we?
Yeah, we put Roger and Laura on it, or no, maybe we did, we're waiting.
Roger, Roger was the only one we put on to the, the Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
Very first one.
Right.
Very first one, we put Roger on, but you're right, we did, we haven't, we haven't, uh, put Laura. I had it in my notes, but we didn't make that motion. Lindsay, would you prefer to have Laura Oliver on the Board of Adjustments or the Zoning Commission?
We made Roger to reappoint to... Okay. Uh, and how many positions do we need to, to fill on the Zoning Commission? So the two that we have in the packet for consideration would be Douglas Rooney and Laura Oliver, correct?
Yes.
And, and we have two positions to fill. I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint, uh, Douglas Rooney and Laura Oliver to the Zoning Commission.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That's the, um, completion of our organizational meeting agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, thank you.
So we're behind on our board meeting and everything.
Need a Diet Coke?
Oh, I don't drink soda. Good for ya.
No, we have a regular meeting.
So we're gonna go ahead and get started on our regular, uh, board meeting, originally scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Due to the length of our organizational meeting, we were unable to, um, get this kicked off at the scheduled time, but we're here now, and I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um, are there any agenda deletions or corrections? Okay, the first item for our meeting today is the Consent Agenda. That includes all claims, uh, approval, payroll removal. Angela Bryant, Detention Officer, Sheriff's Office, effective 12/18/2022. Item C, approved job reclassification. Emma Thompson to part-time IT service desk, effective 12/23/2022. Item D, approved step increase for Jerry Jones, mechanic, secondary roads, effective January 4th, 2023. And Item E, approved the step increase for David Squire, sign foreman, secondary roads, effective January 8th, 2023. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Or are there, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, motion passes. The second item is to consider approval of a contract ID 91-C091-135 for HMA resurfacing with milling on R-57 Highway from State Highway 92 North, 3.58 miles, and HMA resurfacing on G-72 from State Highway 65E, .42 miles, with possible action.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yes, so th- this, uh, is two projects that was combined onto one contract. The contract ID for this is 91-C091-135. And the first one was FM Perrin 135 Project, which is, uh, asphalt resurfacing with milling on R-57. The second project is FM Perrin 136, HMA resurfacing, which is, uh, Liberty Center's pavements, the east and west portion and the north and south sections of the road. With, and Liberty Center, we, we will be doing a, uh, a PCC intersection at Highway 65, uh, which will be able to tie in better and stuff, but the, the remaining portions of those roads will be asphalt, uh, resurfacing. We did, the bidding was, went through the DI- Dewa DOT on December 20th, 2022. We received four bids. And I'm gonna read the bids out. Starting with the lowest and going to the highest. The lowest bidder... The lowest bidder was OMG Midwest Incorporated. Doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving. Their bid was one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Is this information in our packet with the bidders?
It, it, you should have been sent.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have it. It's not here with the section I have.
It's not, we only have one page of resolution to approve the contract, but we don't have any of those details, so.
Okay. I can just read you the, read the bids here?
Yeah.
This is a confidential document. Usually they send this to you, and I don't know, I don't know why it didn't get sent to you. But this is the, the total bids and stuff. Maybe because of, of the confidentiality of it, you did not receive it.
I would really like to have, uh, him make a copy, let's just have them make a copy real quick of that, so we can see what we were talking about.
Okay.
Michaela, will you make a copy of those, please? Let's just take a break. Can you tell us about the project, like, when, when do you think this is gonna start, how long is it gonna take?
Usually with asphalt projects, they start those up usually around the first part of April, as the weather starts warming up. Because of asphalt, you have to maintain temperatures and stuff to get the compaction and stuff, so. My guess is around the first parts of April.
Okay.
Where it could possibly start. There is a late start date on there. I do not have that information with me, but, uh, but my guess is that, uh, Des Moines Asphalt is a busy company, but hopefully they will get started in April, is what we're hoping, so.
It's okay.
We will be doing a milling on R fifty-seven, that is to, uh, smooth out the profile of the existing pavement and to lower the grade. Because of the, the road is so narrow on R fifty-seven, uh, back in, back when they built these roads, they did not buy right away. And, uh, that road has already got one lift on it. So we can't keep bringing the road up without, and then we're gonna start losing our shores.
Okay.
So that, that was another reason why we're doing a milling on R fifty-seven.
Okay.
Which it, it goes up to the Middle River Bridge, just short of the Middle River Bridge from ninety-two. The, the pavement beyond that is in much better shape than the pavement to the south of Middle River, so. And then due to costs, you know, and we only have so much money to spend, that's why we kinda broke it up a little bit. Liberty Center, as I said, we're, we're doing a PCC intersection, uh, at sixty, at Highway sixty-five. That is, I think, a good thing to do, uh, you know, that, that way we have something to tie into with our asphalt.
Can you hold on just a second? What's that? There aren't, there's no signature line on this. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. And, uh, Liberty Center, the north, s- north and south sections of the road are gonna be, uh, that comes through local money, that there's no FM money for that, that's one hundred and sixtieth Avenue. And, uh, what else can I say about this? Both, both projects were combined on one contract to get a better bid, that's why we did this.
What's, what are the potential impacts on the residents or businesses or others that might be in the area?
With Liberty Center, there should not, with, there's not many businesses in Liberty Center other than basically the school system.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the contractors have to allow all residents and business owners access to their properties. The good thing about Liberty Center is there are multiple entrances and exits out of the, the little community. But, uh, for R fifty-seven, it will probably be one, doing one lane at a time with pilot cars and flaggers running it, so people will be able to get in and out of their, their homes or businesses and, uh, with, with no problems. Typically asphalt jobs go very quickly, you know. At Liberty Center, you're looking at possibly two weeks for the PCC work and then probably less than a week, uh, for the asphalt work. R fifty-seven, you know, that with the milling and everything, that, that project could last quite a while. You know, you're looking at probab- probably almost a month, uh, dealing with that, so.
Is, is there a, a performance, as in time performance, uh?
There are, on, on our contracts, we work with what's called working days. If the contractor can work, at a certain point, they have a late start date. If they start the project prior to that date, working days do start. If, if it gets past the late start date, working days will start at that point, too. So, but, but once they start work, then they're committed to after, to get the project completed then, if they can work. A lot of it depends on weather, things like that.
Is there any bonus, uh, for early performance?
There, there is. Typically, there is profile, for HMA, there is profile bonuses.
Excuse me.
For, for smoothness, smoothness of ride and also thickness of pavement.
Okay, we're ready to go down through your sheet now.
All right.
Thank you for that, thank you for your patience.
Like I said, I'm gonna go from the lowest bid to the highest bid, and we received four bids. The lowest bid was OMG Midwest Incorporated, doing business as, uh, Des Moines Asphalt and Paving. Their bid was one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents. The second bidder is Inroads LLC. Their bid was two million, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and nine cents. The third bidder was Norris Asphalt Paving Company. Their bid was two million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. The fourth bidder was Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Their bid was two million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents. The lowest bidder, OMG Midwest, is approximately a little over thirty thousand below our engineer's estimate, which was two million, five thousand, six hundred dollars. And our office recommends to ex- uh, accept OMG Midwest bid in the amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Okay. That's for both projects, correct, that number?
That is for both projects, 'cause they're both combined onto one contract.
Okay.
How does this fit within the budget of the county at this point in time?
It was already budgeted, they always bring these to the board just to make sure that we know.
It's paid with farm-to-market funds. And like I said, Liberty Center, the north, south sections of the road is local funds, uh, that's not a farm-to-market road, one hundred and sixtieth Avenue.
So this will, to answer Mark's question, this, so these projects, have we done without an impact to your budget?
Correct.
Okay. Without, without an amendment to your budget?
Right.
Okay. Of course they're gonna impact your budget.
Yeah, yeah, yes, definitely, all projects will impact it.
So then these are scheduled for this current fiscal year?
Yes, that is correct, yes. And, uh, another thing on the resolution is this gives, uh, David, uh, you give him authority to sign the contract after, uh, all the paperwork is submitted into what we call Doc Express, which is document storage.
Where did this fit, uh, within the, um, range of priorities within the county structure? I mean, is, is, was this a real high priority that we needed to?
This is a high priority, especially on.
I've been on this road, it's not.
And Liberty Center are way overdue for.
Mm-hmm. I would concur.
The maintenance that we do on R fifty-seven, you know, essential to keep that road, uh, as good as we can to keep it safe for people, so.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Do you have anything else?
Nope, that, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Bringing this to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract, um, as outlined, and to approve the contract to OMG Midwest for the amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion at all? Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of contract, Unified Contracting Services.
Okay, this is an annual agreement, uh, that we have with Unified Contracting Services to provide compliance and testing services for our underground fuel storage tanks in the amount of three thousand dollars. The, uh, and this is, the three thousand dollars is paid for by, I think it's all split between all entities that use our fuel station down there at the shop. And this is a, uh, it's by Iowa code that we have to do this. So, and I think this would be the, either the second or third contract that we've had with, with this company.
So, so this is, this is, I do have a quick.
They agree with it on that.
Yeah, I just have a quick question on it, because as I was reading the contract period, it looks like it's, did you say it was for a two-year period?
No, it's for one year, it's from January first through December first, and then a new, new agreement will be made, January first again.
Well, the reason I was raising a question was because on the sheet that you, it says January first twenty twenty-three to December first twenty twenty-four. That's what caught my attention, that's why I was asking if it's a two-year contract.
That's a good, good catch.
Yep, then it must, yep, then it must be a two-year contract, then.
So does it run through the end of December or just?
That, to me, it would run, it would probably end December, and then we would have to start a new one on January first.
Of twenty twenty-five, yes, so this is a two-year contract, not.
And it looks like it is, at a contract sum of three thousand annually, then. So you're probably looking, you're looking at six thousand dollars total.
Okay, I got it. So it's really a six thousand dollar contract, not a three thousand dollar contract.
I don't really deal with this too much, uh, on the fuel storage stuff part of it, but, uh, yes, that's what it looks like on that, on that, so. And I'm gonna say it's gonna be six thousand dollars for, for two years.
So in essence, we're obligating, um, second-year funds here, not just for one year.
Correct. It seems odd, the, the contract dates seem odd, January.
I actually thought it was for one year, and I did not catch the twenty, twenty twenty-four when I looked at this, so.
I suggest we table this because we need clarification on if those dates are correct.
Yeah.
And this actually spans three different, um, budget periods, so.
That's my concern, is that we're, we're obligating a future, uh, group here.
But there, there are three entities, it would be the Board, the Sheriff's Office, and, uh, City of Indianola Schools.
School, city, yeah.
So, which, to me, where's Carlisle and where's Norwalk? They're getting the benefit as well, I mean.
Yeah.
They're not, but.
Well, that was the reason why I, I raised a question, because it looked like it was a two-year contract, but the dates were kinda funny here, so.
Why don't we go back and, and dot the i's and cross the t's on this one, and then bring it back to us, um, in our next meeting?
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So the next item on the agenda is discussion regarding applying for local assistance and tribal consistency fund, LAT CF, under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, with possible action. What do you got, Megan? Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, still morning.
So Crystal actually sent me this to look into, um, and it is more funding, it's through the American Rescue Plan Act, which is, um, obviously where we got all of our ARPA funds as well, but it's additional. Um, it's basically to make up for inconsistent federal programs, so the Treasury is providing, uh, funding. And we've already been, um, approved so far as it's, we've got, uh, funds allocated to the county, so I just need your approval to actually apply for them. Um, it would be one hundred thousand dollars over two payments of fifty thousand. Um, and again, it's, it's more ARPA funds, the funds can be spent very similarly to our general funds. Um, mostly, we can use the, use the funds on any governmental purpose other than lobbying activity. So there would be funds that we can use, um, pretty much the same way as we use our general funds. Um, so I just need your approval to go ahead and apply, and then after I apply, I can give you an update on if we're approved.
How did you find out about this?
Uh, Crystal actually sent me the information.
Good, good job, Crystal.
Oh, thank you, Darren.
So. Okay, any other comments? Questions? I'll make a motion to approve the application for local assistance and tribal consistency fund.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, item on the agenda is to receive and file reports.
I'll make a motion to receive and file Veterans Affairs.
Any discussion? Let me, let me wait for a second, I'm out of protocol here, can I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I do have a question, though. And it's not related to the action we just took. It's kind of a general question here, but when we receive these reports like this, if it would be possible for the folks from a given area, whether or not it's Veterans Affairs or whatever office that's filing these reports, I think it would be just of a good public service if, um, representatives from those groups could come and be here even just for a short time to orally present the highlights. So I was thinking back to last month when the Norwalk city manager was here. That was an excellent, uh, update on what was going on, and I think that, uh, everybody is well-served by having the highlights at least shared, what's going on. Here we are, we're filing a report that's been received, we didn't discuss anything about the highlights of the Veterans Affairs. Did anybody learn anything? No. You know, we just filed.
Right.
So I think from a public service standpoint, and frankly, for us as, um, elected representatives, it'd be nice to see a face with these reports and not just receive and file them automatically. I'm, I'm, this is my comment.
It, and I totally agree. I think that's a really good recommendation. We get, we get these, we get the, these reports of various entities, um, at different meetings. And I think it would be very nice, um, for, to get an update.
Yeah.
A face-to-face update, I'd like to see more of that in our board meetings with some of our elected officials, giving us an update on what's going on in their department, our department heads. I think, and that's, um, part of our organizational work session this afternoon as well, so I think we're on the exact same page. That would be nice to get updates and understand what's going on a little deeper in some of these organizations. these organizations.
And I'm not saying that we should do it necessarily every time, but if there's an annual report or something like that that's coming forward, and it's something that we haven't heard from them, the public's not heard from them, I think it's important that we provide that forum for those entities to tell us what things are going on, what they anticipate coming forward, and we just have more information then, more transparency.
Totally agree. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I think we already did it.
Oh, we voted already.
Yeah, we voted, but I was really out of turn here by even bringing that up.
That's okay.
Apologize.
No problem, it's all taken care of. Next item on the agenda is the supervisor's report, and for the sake of time, because we're behind schedule, I'm gonna pass on my report today.
Same here.
And then, Mark, would you have a report for the board, or would you prefer?
Well, I did have a couple things, I just wanted to say thank you to the voters of Warren County for their participation in the elections this last fall. It's nice when we have strong participation, like we did, and the voters clearly spoke on a number of issues, not only the elected officials, but others that were on the ballots. And I would like to take the opportunity to thank all those voters that participated in that. I also want to take just a moment to thank former board member here, Erin DeCook. Erin stepped in and I think did a very good job of helping move this board forward. You as colleagues with Erin did a masterful job with what you were handed and what you had to do with. I think it's your mission to be transparent with people, and to try to engage our electorate was outstanding. I think that you can see the results of that are in the middle of the public squared here in Indianola with the new Justice Center, and I think that all of you are to be commended by, I especially want to do a thank you to Erin DeCook, because I think that he was a large part of the success of that project, and helping to use the funds in a very proper way to get the best results we could for what was trying to be achieved. I also want to thank Erin for just his leadership in general and participation in taking the role seriously here, and I feel like they are big shoes to fill, and I hope that I can do my part to step in and be as good a board member and participant here on the board as what Erin was, and just want to say thank you to him.
Very good. Thank you for that, Mark. The next item on the agenda is public input. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual, the board will not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meeting law, but may do so in the future. No public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. Are there any public comments? Our next meeting date will be January 17th at 2023 at 9:30 a.m.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Uh, second.
Roll call?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Thank you very much.